All right, good afternoon and welcome to the, uh, to the October regular meeting for the Talahoma Planning Commission. Um, the Chairman Paul Schwer, I'm here to call this meeting to order. Um, looking at, looking around, um, we do have a quorum with Mr. Andy Hall absent, but we have all of their members present, six is the quorum. Um, and, uh, and at this time, I would like to, um, to ask everybody to rise and have Mr. Alexander Rice lead us in plus lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
All right, thank you. Um, and just as a point of, point for the, for the meeting is just to be, I was, I was asked to remind everyone to speak directly into the microphones and to make sure that we're, we're, that we can be heard on TV and whatnot. Thank you for that. Um, item number four, read and approve the minutes from the September fifteenth, uh, meeting. Um, I'd entertain a motion for the minutes as written.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Rice.
Second.
Second from Mayor Seaborn. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained? Uh, motion passes. Minutes are approved, six to zero. Um, uh, item number five, general public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. Um, if there is anyone from the public tonight that would like to speak on an item that is in the purview of the planning commission, but yet not on tonight's agenda, um, you will be allotted three minutes to speak on that. Um, and I'd invite, invite you to come forward at this time to be recognized. Seeing none, I will close the general public comments and move to reports from commissioners and staff, and I would like to turn it over to Mr. Uh, Mr. Luthy.
Um, I would like to advise the commission, uh, we are working on getting your iPads back to you. Um, I apologize for the delay, there's been some issues with getting them set up, but you should have them ideally by the next meeting. Um, I know the delay is not ideal, but we're working on it. Um, and then I know that Commissioner Schwer and Commissioner Sellers, I think your terms are either going or set to expire here relatively soon, um, so you can look at either getting those vacancies filled, or if we're wanting to extend the terms, we'll have to look at that. Um, but if that is something we'd like to do, I can talk to a city attorney about that and see what we would need to do to put that in place, um, at least until we get the comprehensive plan, um, approved, so we don't have a, a changing of the guard in the middle of that. Um, and then, uh, there may be some review needed for the December planning commission meeting. I know that we're getting up to the holidays, um, with that meeting. Um, I believe that one is currently set for, uh, December fifteenth. Um, uh, it's still a little ways out from Christmas, but it can kind of get difficult with the people, uh, being present around them. Um, so I'll bring this up again at the November meeting, and if we need to reschedule that or, or tweak that at all, um, we need to do that now. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Luthy. Um, I would ask, when the iPads are ready, just let us know so we can maybe come pick them up to review this stuff, uh, beforehand, if, if, if that's, if that's on the table, uh, for November. Um, any, uh, any other comments from the commission at this time?
Um, I, I have one. Um, we haven't set a study session yet for the comprehensive plan.
Correct. That'll be coming out to you this week to get that scheduled.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, moving on to, uh, the approval agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to the agenda as written.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Ms. Sellers? Second. From Ms. McGee.
So, just for the sake of discussion, I'd like to make a motion, we move number one down to number five, uh, Sweetwater down to number five, just to give other folks an opportunity to go first if they don't want to wait through all that, but that's up to the commission.
Got a motion from Mr. Seaborn to move item one to num-, uh, to, to move item, item one to the bottom of the subdivision plats. Um, second from that?
A second.
Second from Ms. McGee. Um, I'll call a vote on that. Uh, all in favor of moving, um, swapping items number one and five? We'll just do it that way.
Yeah.
Um, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And abstained? All right, motion passes to, to amend the agenda. Um, with that, um, we have, we need a motion to, um, approve the agenda as, as amended? I think we already have that motion, but we just need to, we just need to, do we need to vote on that?
Okay.
Vote on the motion as amended? All in favor of the, of the, uh, all the, all in favor of the agenda as amended? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. Um, uh, there is no old business, so moving on to new business, we will start with the, the, um, the Howser Minor Subdivision Final Plat. Um, a proposed final plat to create four new lots of record at, uh, fifty-two thirty Old Manchester Highway. The applicant is, uh, Mr. John Best. Um, and, uh, this is a, this is a public hearing, but I would like to invite the applicant to speak for this time, and Mr. Andy Best, you are recognized.
Yes, my name's Andy Best. Uh, I'm the land surveyor hired to do the, uh, division of the property. Uh, we finally were able to get TDEC preapproval for the septic, uh, systems, um, so we, we postponed it last month, and we're back on this month, so we're seeking approval of the four lot subdivision.
All right, thank you, Mr. Best. All right, uh, with that, this is a public hearing, I'd like to invite anyone to come forward and speak on this at this time. Uh, the, uh, it is, uh, you will be allotted two minutes of time. Uh, anyone want to, anyone wishing to speak on the Howser Minor Subdivision Final Plat, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to staff comments. Uh, Mr. Luthy.
Yeah. Uh, this subdivision plant before you is looking to create a, uh, four new lots of record. There's no additional public infrastructure erosion or anything involved with this subdivision. Um, this subdivision is located within the UGB, um, and this one, we received this one, I think, two or three months ago. Um, we had to wait for some review from TDEC, uh, for the soil sites, and that review has been completed, and so this has been brought back before you, uh, for your review and approval today.
All right, thank you, Ms. Luthy. Uh, with that, uh, entertain a motion from the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Sellers?
Second.
Second from Mr. Klein. Any discussion on this? Mr. Sellers, you're recognized.
Yeah, um, just want to make sure on lot number two, there is sufficient room even with that, uh, perk area that's outlined to, uh, to build a house on it? And still meet the requirements, clearance setbacks and such?
Yes, uh, the, 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 the box that you see in the back of lot two is the, uh, the building box, and that's plenty of room to put a twenty-five hundred square foot house.
Okay.
Uh, and the, the soil site, uh, the, the soil site is allowed for three bedrooms on that lot.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the commission? All right, I'll call a vote. Uh, all in favor of the Howser Minor Subdivision Plat? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, uh, six to zero. All right, um, moving on to item number two, Sage Wood Phase Two Minor Subdivision Final Plat. A proposed final plat to create thirty-six new lots of record at zero Short Springs Road. The applicant is Mr. Alan Howard. I'd like to invite the applicant or representative to come forward at this time.
Good evening, I'm Nicholas Northcutt with Northcutt Surveying, and I'm representing Mr. Howard on this. Um, in short, uh, Mr. Howard had previously gotten preliminary approval on this division. He has already built out and, uh, completed phase one. This would be phase two of that same development, and he has, um, you know, been working on that and getting all the major infrastructure completed and everything, and he is seeking final approval for phase two of this development.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, uh, this is a public hearing, uh, so at this time, I'd like to invite anyone to come forward to speak on the Sage Wood Phase Two Minor Major Subdivision Final Plat, um, at this time. Seeing none, um, I will close the public hearing and move to staff report. Mr. Luthy.
Yeah. This is the phase two final plant for the Sage Wood subdivision. Uh, the phase one has already had its final plant approved. Uh, I believe construction is nearly done, uh, lots have already been sold off to several builders, um, on phase one. I believe it's one builder that has now purchased most, if not all of the lots there. Um, and this is for phase two of that subdivision. Um, there was a modification to this plant. Um, on lot sixty-one, there was originally a stubout, uh, to that property to the south. Um, that has been modified. That modification came before the Development Advisory Committee. Um, everyone got a chance to look at that. Since that stubout requirement was a, a requirement from the fire department for their required access, um, I let them review that change. Uh, the, uh, there's, you know, in order to have it be compliant with this many lots, you either need to have a second access point or a fire access lane. Uh, there was a fire access lane that is installed on phase one, um, so they do meet the requirement for having the, uh, other point of access, uh, so that modification got passed, um, as being compliant, so that phase two is able to continue, uh, to be brought before you today.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, uh, entertain a motion from the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Sage Wood Final Plat?
Yes.
All right. All right. Motion to approve from Mr. Remember Mayor Seaborn? Second?
Second.
Second from Ms. McGee. Uh, any discussion on this from the commission? Mr. Sellers?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up that, uh, back when this was first proposed, um, there were concerns among many of the board members about fire access with this many houses back, uh, you know, that this long narrow lot was a lot of discussion about, you know, the fire lane was needed so it wouldn't only be one, it, one entrance wouldn't be blocked possibly, but that only went back like twelve houses. Uh, I was originally objected to having this many houses on that long lot from a fire safety standpoint, and it was brought up, well, there is a stubout onto the Anderson property, even though it's not developed. It was discussed that, um, that it was allowable to have a stubout to a future development, and I guess my, I want to bring up with the board tonight, my concern about not having that, we approved it with a stubout. Now, I, I spoke with the fire, uh, officials today, my concern about it, and it does meet the fire safety requirements, but, uh, I wanted to bring this up, our, the concerns we had before and, and get, uh, comment from the rest of the board.
And where is the, uh, the one that's, that's in the existing phase one? Where's it at exactly?
Yeah, the current fire access lane's in phase one.
It's right behind the first, you don't see it on here, but it's the first, like, six or seven lots.
Okay.
It doesn't go very far back in there before it turns into where the, uh, mailboxes are going to be located, so it doesn't go very, the, you know, the, there's two entrances, but it's only, like, barely for the first thirty or so lots, which was a first concern.
Yeah.
So, I don't know whether we want to...
I have some similar concerns, I was, uh, possibility of connectivity there, I, I think would be more beneficial for the whole community rather than, I, I think it would be best for the backside of this community to be, if it was allowable at some point, to be connected rather than to be shut off for the same reasons. And, uh, also, the, the, there's a buffer area for stormwater, it looks like? Who will, will the HOA be responsible for that? Or what, is that something that will be part of someone's lot and they will be responsible for the buffer area as well?
So, that buffer area is on a, I think it's a stream or a creek, so it just represents a natural area. Because of that buffer, like, you can't really go in and, and mow it or cut it down, it, it's a natural area, it has to kind of be left, uh, to its own devices.
Okay. What about the retention basin, it looks like behind these houses in the very middle, there's maybe a retention basin of some sorts? Is that part of the HOA's responsibility or their homeowner? HOA?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what was the purpose of removing this stub?
It was a request from the developer.
Would you like me to speak to that?
Yeah.
Sorry, yes.
Um, yeah, so, uh, the developer, Mr. Howard, had, uh, upon being informed that, um, there would be, or the, the, the stub would not be a necessity as long as he kept the fire lane, he decided to remove the stub. However, the way that we have set this up, um, for that very corner lot back in there, you, should the opportunity for the connectivity ever be there, then, uh, he has allowed for that future connectivity through there. Like, right now, for the purposes of the final approval, he has removed the stub, but the way the lot is set up, uh, we've still kept the radiuses and all that for that future connection, and he does plan on retaining that lot, um, you know, for the possibility of the future connection, but it was his prerogative at this time to remove the stub since the fire lane did in fact meet the requirements. Um, but there again, he is leaving the option open for that stub and for that future connectivity.
So, in terms of, so in terms of removing the stub, what you're really saying is he didn't pave that out?
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's a bit of cost savings at this point, sounds like.
But he is leaving the window open for that, yes, sir.
Okay.
So, if there is development on lot sixty-one?
Yeah, the way the setbacks, everything on that lot are set up is that, uh, it, it will be like there's a future road there, yes.
And is there an easement to make sure that we maintain that?
Uh, not at the moment, no.
Okay.
But the way the building setbacks and everything are set up, it is set up for future, uh, connectivity through there.
Well, how wide does the road have to be?
Fifty foot. Or the margin would have to, you know, the right of way would have to be fifty foot.
But then, they would have, and then another twenty-five foot would be usable for the driveway to get it back to that house at sixty, lot sixty-one?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
So, there's a seventy-five foot, well, I'm not sure what that's any, no, I don't, if it's fifty foot, how's it, how's the driveway going to get back to, uh, number sixty-one if, if the, I guess it'd come off of the road that goes through?
Yes, sir, it'd come directly off the road, and at the time that our future road is put through there, their driveway would just, I'm, I'm sure a portion of that driveway would be absorbed in the road and then would just connect up to where the future road is built. Yes, sir.
And is Ms., you said Mr. Howard's retaining that lot?
That's correct.
I mean, I can't. Okay.
I'm, I'm opposed, 'cause the, I see, if for some reason, he doesn't retain that lot at some point, and he does sell it off, you're going to have a homeowner very upset that you're taking part of their yard away?
Yeah.
For the connectivity. I think if it's going to be possibly connected at some point, then it needs to, the infrastructure needs to go ahead and be put there in my mind. Otherwise, it's probably just not going to happen in the future.
Do we have standing to require that?
The requirement for connectivity is a requirement from the International Fire Code, it's not part of our zoning or subdivision regulations.
So, does that, so does that mean we can't require?
The requirement that would require the connection can be satisfied either by the connection or an approved fire access lane.
Okay.
And there is a fire access lane that has been deemed to be satisfactory.
I'm not sure I agree with that, considering how short that fire lane is in going to that subdivision. But our fire department has agreed to that. Mr.?
I have a comment about that.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't speak for the chairman.
Would Mr. Howard be, uh, willing to grant us an easement to that, uh, which would never affect if it, if it ever is developed into that other property? That way the property owner, the lot, lot sixty-one would know that there's an easement there that might possibly be developed in the future and could put their driveway in there accordingly?
Um, I believe Mr. Howard, um, was opposed to the easement, just because if there is a public easement there, then even if there's an easement without infrastructure actually being built, um, then somebody in that other development could tie into that without, um...
Why don't we make a conditional easement then? I think I could create the language for that so that nobody else could tie into it unless it was actually going to be developed with prior approval or something. That's something for y'all to consider, I think. I don't like verbal agreements, I don't think they're enforceable at all, so we ought to have something in writing.
So, if you had something in writing that said that he intends to retain that lot, would that be satisfactory?
If I could review that, that might be sufficient, yes, sir.
Okay. I think that would be something he would be willing to consider.
Saying that he would not sell the lot, essentially?
That's correct.
Or at least that portion.
Or that he would retain it. Yes, sir.
Well, the language would be that he would not sell the lot unless he dedicated an easement to the city for access to that other property. In that way, we would know that that would happen if it ever, we don't ever know if this Anderson firm's ever been developing anything anyway within the lifetimes of any of us here, but we'd have something in writing that we could record in some way, so that someone who bought that lot would know that that was a possibility in the future.
And it could be something completely different than that, and that lot could be subdivided, and it could be for something other than just the Anderson.
Well, it could, it could be approved with that, uh, with that contingency, you know, that that lot, uh, you know, would be under the ownership of the original developer until the time that he, you know, decides to, uh, either put the easement there or finish the infrastructure out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not sure how to word.
Should we, is this something that we should postpone pending, um, our attorney reviewing a document rather than approving with a contingency?
I think you could just give a con- uh, conditional approval, conditioned upon that, and we could create the language necessary to satisfy y'all's concerns about that.
I think that would, I, 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 I agree with that approach. So, if we, if we wanted to develop a motion to, to say that this is approved condition, you know, given the condition that there's a, that there's a, an agreement with the city, uh, for, for retainment on lot sixty-one, um, then we can do that.
Is that going to be, uh, an amendment to the, a motion that's?
Yes.
For approval then? Andrew, you want to go ahead and say it? I don't know how to say.
You mean Alex?
Alex, I'm sorry.
I mean, my brother.
Yeah?
Um, I'll make it, I'll make a motion to amend, uh, to, with a contingency, that the owner retained lot sixty-one, uh, or at which time he sells it would, uh, allow an easement before the sale of property for connectivity. Does that make sense? Okay.
I'll, I'll give you a...
Yeah.
Here.
Does this mean an agreement that lot sixty-one is going to be retained by the owner?
Yeah. Or if he decides to sell it, then he would grant an easement prior to selling the property for the connecting infrastructure.
To say all that property would include an agreement about the easement, yeah. Any discussion? All right. All right. From, from, from Mr. Rice, a motion to approve the item pending owner retaining lot sixty-one or grant easement when lot sixty-one is sold. I'm second on that.
Second.
Second from Mr. Sellers. Any discussion on the amendment as written? Vote on the amendment. All in favor of the motion as written?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained? All right, that motion passes, six to zero. There you go. All right, um, and now, back to the original discussion. Um, are we ready to vote on this? Any more discussion? All right, let's vote on the, um, um, Sage Wood Phase Two Major Subdivision Final Plats. Um, motion to approve contingent to the, to the, um, to the, to the previous motion. Um, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And abstained? All right, that motion from Mr. Sell, that's, that motion was from Mr. Sellers and Mr. Klein. Oh, I'm sorry, no, that's not, I'm sorry. Um, that was...
I think I made the original.
That was Seaborn and McGee. Sorry, I'm at the wrong spot on my notes. All right, motion for Mr. Seaborn, and so that, the Sage Wood Phase Two is approved, provided that we get that contingency. Okay. All right. Item number three, uh, fourteen-hundred Cedar Lane Minor Subdivision Final Plat. A proposed final plat to create one new lot of record, uh, at fourteen-hundred Cedar Lane. The applicant is Mr. Daryl Welsh. I'd like to invite the applicant or representative. Mr. Best, you're recognized.
Daryl's here, but, uh, he wanted me to come up here and take care of it. Um, uh, it's, uh, it's the old Cedar building now, um, what's, what's it called, Daryl?
Get Daryl here anyway.
Comp? What's it called, the?
All we're, all we're wanting to do, all, Harden Family, I'm Daryl Welch, and I'm representing Harden Family Partners. We have a, uh, contract on the property currently. All we're wanting to do is subdivide, uh, it's, it's on a big track, and we're just trying to make it a smaller track.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, so anyone would like to speak on fourteen-hundred Cedar Lane, come forward at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Luthy, staff report.
Yeah. Yeah, as you can see, uh, the existing lot is quite large. There's currently a commercial building on this newly created lot. Uh, the subdivision just seeks to separate that existing building from the remainder of the properties, um, to make that its own lot, uh, for that building, um, and to create it as a unique lot of record.
All right, thank you, Ms. Luthy. All right. Motion for the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh, for the final plat from Mr. Sellers?
Second.
Second from Ms. McGee. I'll write that down this time. All right, any discussion on this? Mr. Sellers?
I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, the drawing for this, I'm having a difficulty understanding exactly, uh, what's the lot we're talking about generating? Is it, is, is the whole lot in, that, that's shown on here, is that, and the building, is that all the lot that we're generating?
Correct.
That's, but it's part of a bigger area that we don't see on this drawing, right?
Correct.
So, they're pulling this out of what is, uh, a much larger piece of land around it?
Yes.
Right? Okay. It was not clear when I looked at it what, which, you know, what part, what part we were generating?
The, 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 the rest of the land's from the east, is that correct?
Yeah, it's not, the rest of the land's not shown in this map, correct?
Yeah, that's what was confusing.
It's, it's this over here.
Yeah, Harden Family. Yeah.
Or is the lot, is the lot, the red square inside the, the bigger?
It's a bit easier to look at with local law.
The red square is the building?
Yeah.
And then the surrounding lines of the actual lot itself. Uh, the existing lot continues, um, paths seventh street up toward William Northern Boulevard, uh, has fourteen forty, I believe, is also on that lot. Um, no, that's, that one's already separated. This one here, if you open it up, it, it goes down along Lakeway Place, William Northern, um, then extends a little bit south, um, borders up against thirteen thirty. Um, the area to the east of the existing building that current, that lot, which will currently have fourteen twenty and fourteen forty Cedar Lane on it, um... No, that one's already separated. This one here, if you open it up, it, it goes down along Lakeway Place, William Northern, then extends a little bit south, borders up against thirteen thirty. The area to the east of the existing building that current, that lot, which will currently have fourteen twenty and fourteen forty Cedar Lane on it, those areas are undeveloped. But what you're looking at with the new creation of that lot is just gonna have the building, the Seventh Street, East Avenue access easement will be next to it, and then it'll contain the parking lots and the other features for that existing building at fourteen hundred Cedar Lane.
Okay.
Will be on that new lot.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any discussion? With that.
I'm still just having a hard time understanding.
I know.
Do you know which of these buildings this is?
You said that was the old Sears building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that one there.
Sears building, pool building, let's see, lots of things.
Some insurance thing off, yeah. All right. All right. So it was, yeah, the building was on a much, much larger lot, including every, all the land of the east. They wanted to divide that up. My, my assumption would be to do something with the remaining land that's with something else. But at least get that one by itself, so.
I can see it now.
Okay. All right, we're good. All right, with that, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the fourteen hundred Cedar Lane Minor Subdivision Final Plat? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained? All right, that's six to zero. Green Thornberry Road, Minor Subdivision Final Plat. Proposed final plat to create three new lots of record at eighty-nine, eight-nine-zero Thornberry Road. The applicant is Timothy Green. I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward this time.
Nicholas Northcut again, I'm representing the Greens on this, and they were just wanting to divide this property. We, you know, they were, they were originally wanting to try to get four lots out of it, but due to soils and layout of the existing house and whatnot, they, they were only able to, to get the three that you see. But anyway, we've gotten through all the TDEC process with suitable number of bedroom approvals for all the lots, and so we are seeking approval for this minor division. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. I'd like to invite anyone to come forward at this time to speak on the Green Thornberry, Thornberry Road Minor Subdivision Final Plat. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Staff report, Mr. Luthy.
This is another minor subdivision out in the UGB. Lots one, two, and three all have independent access off of Thornberry Road. Each one has their soil areas delineated, and there are no special exceptions or considerations for this plat.
All right, thank you, Mr. Luthy. Motion for the commission?
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Sellers. Second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Rice. Second from Mr. Rice, sorry, I'm not speaking in the microphone. All right, any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, call the vote.
I want to ask Mr. Luthy, if the RS one zone is completely complied with by this subdivision, what are the minimums? I'm assuming that's a Coffee County zone?
So Coffee County, since this is in our urban growth, urban growth boundary, if they were to build on the lot as is, it would follow the RS one zone. However, when they are subdividing the property, anything that has to do with planning commission review or zoning, this is in the UGB, falls under our zoning. So while it's currently zoned RS one, we are reviewing it as if it is R one under our zoning because it's in our urban growth boundary.
All right, any other discussion? Make sure I'm looking everywhere. All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor of Green Thornberry Roads Minor Subdivision Final Plat?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstained? Motion passed six to zero. All right, with that, we will move on to item number one here, Sweetwater Major, Major Subdivision Preliminary Plat. Proposed, a proposed final plat to create twenty-one new lots of record at Zero Wilson Avenue. The applicant is JSE Enterprises. I'd like to invite the applicant or representative at this time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zach Blair. I'm a qualified hydrologic professional and PG for TTL. I performed the initial hydrologic study of this property earlier this year in June of twenty twenty-five, then received concurrence from TDEC on both our findings as well as under the notice of coverage. And if you have any questions about that study as well as subsequent work we've done, then I'm happy to ask any questions, both the board and on the audience.
All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, so I would like to invite the public to come forward at this time to speak on this. Anyone that wants to come forward, there's allotted two minutes of time. And please address comments to the commission, and we will address questions after. Thank you, Mr. Gray.
My name is Tony Gro. My name's Tony Gro with Gro Environmental. Done a lot of wetland delineations throughout the state. We do a lot of support for Pulte, D.R. Horton, Lennar, all over the state of Tennessee and southeast. I was contracted by Mr. Tuck to look at the site as for potential for wetlands, and I did go out there and look at it, and there are hydroic soils, and there are fact, wet plants, facultative wetted plants that are on the border of the property adjacent to the border. I did file a report to the Columbia Field Office contradicting what they had found, and noted that they did not follow Chapter Five of the East, the Core Manual, Easter Peanmont Manual. I've also notified Ben McIntyre and Tim Wilder out of the Corps of Engineers office. In the planning world, when we plan something with a development like this, is that planning requires you to identify all the resource constraints with the site before you do anything. The reason why is the cost can come up later on that will probably be unbearable if they were caught at the very end. So one of the first things you want to do is you want to get clearance from TDEC, which the client did get, not the client, but the developer did get that from TDEC. But then, there's a coordination also with the Corps of Engineers. One is state jurisdictional waters, and one is US jurisdictional waters. If you do not get clearance with the Corps, they can come back to you and require that a delineation be done because you have to determine whether it's US jurisdiction or not. If they determine there's US jurisdiction, then this is probably over half an acre of wetland, then they can require that a permit be put together, individual permit, which goes to the public comment. And then you go through a planning process where the developer has to offer three additional sites that are less impactful than that one in the area, and additional, three additional site plans that show less impact. So when the planning process environmental, it can't be overlooked just thinking that you can get through with it and not hit you later on. Down the road, it will hit you later on. So the best thing to do is to get all those boxes checked off before any further.
Thank you, Mr. Gro, your time is expired.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the time to five minutes for discussion. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, three more minutes, Mr. Gro.
Yeah, I, that was probably more the end of it. That was just an introduction to permitting process with the state and with the Corps of Engineers. A lot of local entities have gone through this process of going through state coordination, but have not satisfied the US Corps. I advise that, you know, the city to all would take the US jurisdictional water status very seriously because we're in an area where there's a lot of wetlands. I've been called to look at several properties with Harden Family and others that we may enter that area that needs to be looked at carefully. It can't come back to, like the City of Lebanon, where they had to go through a process of coordinating, otherwise they were gonna lose their, their authority of what they do over stormwater. So the main thing I really want to emphasize is that there are wetlands at this site. They're problem, they're disturbed wetlands, so they have to be evaluated by a certain procedure under the Core Manual. It's called Chapter Five. I did that, and now TDEC is coming out Wednesday to reevaluate it, and the Corps of Engineers will be making a visit soon, sometime in the next couple of weeks. That's it.
All right, thank you. Let me finish the public hearing. Anyone else would like to speak on this time?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rebecca Tuck. My husband and I own the property to the north of this ten acres. And.
Can you state your address, please?
Yes, we are at four thirty-one Old Shelbyville Highway. And I have an aerial. May I share that with the board as well?
You may.
Okay. So I am not here because I oppose growth, because I do believe growth should be thoughtful and sustainable and in harmony with our community and the neighbors that it serves. The proposed development off of Highway fifty-five behind, behind the Lone Oaks Subdivision where we live does not meet that standard. One, it's a proposal of twenty-one new homes behind our five stately homes facing Highway one thirty. It's very dense with twenty-one lots, and it is not in keeping with the neighborhood, and it has no minimum requirements of square footage or aesthetics that we know of yet. So that's one concern that we have. But the most important concern that we have is the environmental impact. This site of ten acres does contain wetlands. If you see that middle lot in the middle and those dark areas, you'll see two dark, two dark areas running straight down. A lot of it goes right onto our property. Ignoring these current conditions is this property would proceed, it would displace more dirt and increase the runoff onto our homes to the north. It is well documented that we already have water issues. We had videos, but once we got here, we were understood that we couldn't play those videos. But we have called the city many times, me and our neighbors, about the water issues that gets up over the road and where the electrical boxes and those things are. So it is well documented that we already have a water issue there. These water issues with the rain and the downfall happens numerous times throughout the year. At least three of the five of our homes there have addressed these issues by adding extra drainage protection and encapsulating under our homes, which with sump pumps and dehumidifiers, and that's a very expensive undertaking that we have all done, that's been a great expense. And now we feel if this subdivision is allowed to proceed as designed, then that will overload our systems even more than it already is. So that's our main concern, and we can't take any more water. We have enough, and if we were allowed to have our videos, you would see that when it rains, it stands inches all the way around and runs like, and it looks like a lake around and between our homes. So if it's permitted to be this way, we increase the risk to our property and maybe even taxpayer-funded fixes. I don't know how that works with the culverts and the roads and the ditches and things that could go wrong. I don't understand all that, but I know that it's a potential. So lastly, our zoning codes exist to preserve the character of our areas and our, our communities. The proposed density of twenty-one building lots could erode the very qualities that make our community desirable. And also, not to mention, we're at the end of the runway, three-six-one-eight. So that's a concern that we have as well because we've had parachuters in our backyard, we've had a plane crash across the road, we've had several things happen. So we also pay very high property taxes as well. My husband and I alone pay over six thousand dollars a year for our six acres in our home on that property. So we do want to protect it from any water damage, and we want things that are built there to be nice, and we hope that they will be. So we just are for responsible development and for the infrastructure to protect the environment and to protect our homes. That's what we're asking for mainly. And furthermore, if the developer is here, I don't know if they are or not, we'd be happy to purchase that wetlands from them, and that would help solve some of this. But I would like to just say thank you for your time to be heard.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Steve? My name is Mike Posey, and I live two doors up from the Tucks. So.
Can I, can I get your address, though?
We're on three forty-one Old Shelbyville Highway.
All right, thank you, sir.
There's four thirty-one. There are two houses between us. Or there's one house between ours. But I need to know who's gonna be responsible for the retaining ponds that are shown on the plans after all the development is completed. Because basically what I see from, from that, from the, from the proposed plan, there are two ponds, and both of them are behind my house, behind my property. Now, I've already spent forty thousand dollars to have my basement encapsulated because I, I didn't know I was gonna have to do that when I built the house. But now I've had to spend forty thousand to encapsulate the basement. I don't want to spend any more money because more, more water is running on my property. Two of the videos that we were gonna, that we had hoped that we could show, show the property in front of my house as well as the Tuck's house, and, and you can see the water running, the ditch is full. The water is running over the road, and if anybody's driving down that road, they're gonna, there, there, there's gonna be an accident at some point, and somebody's gonna get killed. The other issue that I have is I got enough water, and I don't need more water on my property. And if you, if you clean off that area behind me and put houses on there and roads on there, that water's gonna come downhill, and that's where I am, is downhill. So I'm very concerned about this, and, and if, and I would ask you to look at this real closely because we don't need any further exacerbation of the, the problem that we have with water. I've been to the state, I've been to the city. City says they can't do anything about the water issue because it's a state road. I've been to the state TOD. They've come out, they've tried to, they've tried to get some of the, the ditch cleaned out, and they've tried it especially down at the creek level to get it cleaned out, but it hasn't helped. It still backs up, and it backs up all the way from my house. We don't need any more water, so I appreciate you, you listening to me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Posey.
Good evening. My name is Russell Cradle. I have a couple statements here, one of which is I've been asked by Eugene London.
Mr. Mr. Cradle, can I, can I get your address, please?
The address for Mr. London's property is.
I need your address for the record, though.
Okay, seven-two-five Old Shelbyville Highway.
Thank you.
And Mr. London here resides at sixteen hundred Wilson Avenue, and he owns the property at thirteen-fourteen Wilson Avenue, which adjoins the proposed development. But he could not be here tonight, and he asked me to read this as a matter of public record, and then I have a statement of my own that I'd like to read. It says, good evening, my name is Eugene London. I reside at sixteen hundred Wilson Avenue and own the adjoining property at thirteen-fourteen Wilson Avenue, which borders the proposed Sweetwater Subdivision site. I respectfully ask the planning commission to take a phased and cautious approach to this project until scientific and environmental reviews confirm that it will not harm the wetlands or the surrounding properties. The track already produces heavy, heavy runoff that floods nearby yards during major storms. Adding twenty-one new homes without verified hydrology and buffer protections could significantly worsen these conditions. Section four dash ten dot five of the city's subdivision regulation requires repering buffer zones and prohibits approval of any subdivision that increases flood flows or damages. The TDEC permit for this site remains pending, which means the state has yet, has not yet confirmed compliance. I am not opposed to responsible growth, but I urge that approval be phased and conditioned starting with no more than ten lots until the science confirms that surrounding homes and wetlands will be protected. Thank you for your time and your commitment to thoughtful, evidence-based development. Respectfully, Eugene R. London, President, CEO, Systems Integration Modeling Simulation, Inc. Again, my name is Russell Cradle, and again, seven-two-five Old Shelbyville Highway. Ms. Rose and I own the sixty acres to the west of this ten acre track. I sent each of you an email this morning stating our position on this property. The neighbors and homeowners that join the Sweetwater Subdivision have serious concerns. about this project. The runoff issues from Stillwater subdivision into West Fork Rock Creek are a perfect example, and we are providing you with video evidence, proof, evidence of the runoff, also of the runoff of Sweetwater, and the potential legal implications for the city. In addition, the known wetlands that exist on Sweetwater property were ignored and not thoroughly tested. The major errors in the original hydrology report are indicative of the lack of testing on this property. The satellite image that you have in front of you clearly shows the water flows from the south to the north and must not be ignored. Mr. Tuck and I met with then-director Charles Rush and the developer back in January. The developer stormed out of the room after thirty seconds, only to be talked back in by Mr. Rush. We were there to discuss his plans, and he was nothing but rude, combative, argumentative, and insulting to both of us. On three separate occasions, we had to ask him to stop yelling at us that we were there in good faith. The only question we were asked by this developer was if he would give up, if we would give up a three million dollar profit to not develop this property. My answer was yes. I would rather count my friends and neighbors than my money. Is it in Telehome's best interest to place a high-density subdivision at the end of Telehome's airport's primary runway, one-eight-three-six? I remind everyone of the events on June eighth of this year, when the skydiving plane crashed due to pilot error. There are city restrictions that prevent me from relocating a house to another neighborhood if the houses are not plus or minus ten years of age of the house I'm moving. That's a reasonable restriction to protect the existing homeowners and neighborhoods, but you allow me to build any house I want, or as many houses as possible, on the same lot. Again, what sense does that make? If you choose to allow this to proceed, then my advice to anyone that lives in Telehome that owns a nice home with a vacant lot beside it is that you buy that lot to prevent a developer from buying it and slamming several homes on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradle.
Good afternoon. My name's Joel Tuck. I live at four thirty-one Old Shelbyville Highway, as my wife has already attested. So I believe the existing ten-acre tract land proposed to be developed in Sweetwater subdivision encompasses twenty-one lots and three detention basins, roads, sidewalks, et cetera. It's a lot of impervious cover that you're fixing to cover up with hardscape. And I know it's been engineered, I know that you have three detention ponds there, I know they're shown to be dumping out if they flood onto our back properties, and that's a concern to all of us. So we have a major portion of the said development containing wetlands. I know there's a disagreement with that, with the existing engineer, but I think with TDEC coming out this week, we'll have an opportunity to be able to clear that up. Does it, or doesn't it? If it does, then we're back to square one. So I'm asking you, you hold up, let's get the final answers from TDEC, the Corps of Engineers, before we start approving something that really might not even be what we end up with. You know, I've looked at this, and I've spoken directly to TDEC, Corps of Engineers, and as Tony has previously stated, representing us, that, you know, the respective site visits for testing determination are coming up. Couple of things I noticed, you've got a couple of rules, the four oh one rule he mentioned, the four oh four rule, both state and federal, that need to be appeased, because you've got illegal runoff basically right now going to transpire. So if you look at the satellite plan, I mean, you see the dark areas and you see the amount of runoff, and this has been going on for years. So to come in and change that direction of that water at this current time, that water runs off, runs through our yards, to the ditch, to the creek. So that's telling you there's wetlands evolving here that come all the way through our yards and to the ditch and to the creek. You can't expand or deepen the ditch, because you have utilities, you have gas lines, electric lines buried in that ditch. So without a whole lot of expense, you can't dig it out and make it any deeper to capture any more water that's coming off this field. And I wish you could see the videos, because it is a tremendous amount of water. You know, the other thing I'm asking the city of Telehome is, you probably need to maybe go back and look at the sequence of events and how we approve things. There's a lot of counties, you know, Williamson, Rutherford, Davidson, Wilson, a lot of counties out there that say, let's get TDEC and let's get COR, all approved, before we start dancing on this as far as what a site plan can look like. Because a lot of changes can happen after the fact. That'll eliminate a lot of these meetings and discussions. If you can just get the answers from those folks to say, this is what you're allowed to do, then you can go forward with the design. Speaking of design, has there a traffic study been done on this? Is that required by the city of Telehome? It might be by TDEC, but I don't know if city Telehome requires one. Also, civil engineering-wise, we always do soils testing. Go out and see what you got. You do cores, you figure out how deep the rock is. This is a residential neighborhood, but we're building these detention ponds that are four and five feet deep. What if he hits rock? You just make them wider? I mean, what's the answer? I don't know. But I'm interested in finding out those type things before we say, this plan's good, let's go. And let him spend a lot of money on engineering and design to get to a permit stage, then gets redlined to death to correct these things based upon what he's found out once he gets into it. So, you know, I realize that we're throwing a lot of things at you here today, but the detention basins are a major concern to all that are here this afternoon. The design of them, how are you going to control the mosquitoes? These are wet detention basins. Mosquitoes are horrible. You know, the life safety issues, these lots are designed to go right up next to the detention ponds. I know we're saying the HOA and the management of taking care of these detention ponds are going to be by the HOA. Who's initially going to fund the HOA to set it up and have enough funds there? Are we going to have a bond set up to take care of these? You know, it will be years before an HOA gets in place where they would have the funds to be able to take care of these detention ponds. In the meantime, the developer sold the lots, and he's gone. So then's it fall back on the builder? I mean, you might have ten different builders in here. I just don't know that we have everything lined up and thought out to be able to say this is how we're going to handle it.
All right, thank you, sir.
So in closing, I just ask you to consider all the issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Seeing no more, we close the public hearing, I will invite the developer back up to address those questions, and then we will move to staff report. Sorry, you're recognized.
Once again, my name is Zach Boyer. I'm the QHP and PG for TTL that conducts this initial study. I'd like to also point out that the aerial that you all have for you is from 2021 after an eleven-point-five-inch rain event. So I'd ask you all to consider that when looking at this. If you look at other aerials, they do not show that water runoff to be as prevalent. We have had the TDEC involved initially, that was voluntary by us. Our go-by or MO is that whatever project we work on, we have TDEC know that we are doing work and we want their concurrence. When TDEC issues that concurrence, they notify the US Army Corps as well. Now, since then, I was called on the way down here by Ben McIntyre of the US Army Corps to let me know that there was a public complaint against this project, to which I said, understood, we will do an approved JD, which is their jurisdiction determination, where they will be coming out to our site and looking at it from the Army Corps standpoint. So we are working with the Army Corps on that. We are being forthright with them on everything. Also, I'd point out that since our June study, we did come back out to the site last week after we learned that there was a public hearing tonight, and we wanted to see what the conditions were then as well. We also understand that since our site visit, TDEC has started using a predictive wetland software, which they then map wetlands. And on this site, you will see the uncertain, if you go onto the website, you can see a wetland area. We dropped data points to that area, as we do on all of our sites now, and we did not find data to support a wetland being there. We did them by the Eastern Mountain Piedmont, which was cited earlier that we did not do. We did follow that core manual, because that's the geographic province we are in. So we have concurrence from TDEC, we are working with the state, or we are working with Army Corps now, but we have not identified wetlands out there, and we have had them concurrent as such. But once again, I'm open to any questions on that. We're just trying to make sure that we go through all the proper regulatory avenues to ensure that this is done properly. We understand the concerns for water, I understand that myself, but we are just trying to make sure that all regulatory boxes are checked and make sure that what is known is correctly. But this time, we have not identified wetlands, and TDEC has concurred on such. Now, as far as them coming back out to the site, they will not be coming back out to our site without our approval. My guess is with the, when they were told they were coming back outside, that we go into the adjoining property is that they have to notify us first before they come to our site. But if they choose to do so, we are happy to meet them out there, but we have not been notified that by the Columbia Field Office. Our last correspondence with them was that concurrence of our findings of no wetlands.
What date was that?
That was, excuse me.
Approximately.
So we did our study, we submitted ours on June twenty-third, and we got concurrence on July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. It's usually a thirty-day turnaround. So we received concurrence from TDEC on July twenty-fifth, and then that work was then submitted and put into the notice of coverage as a resource report that was dated August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. So it's been viewed by TDEC twice now, our report, and received concurrence of no wetlands. So I'd just like to bring that forward.
Can you clarify your, like, what's happening with Ben McIntyre?
Ben McIntyre, so someone from the public, I don't know who, has issued a formal complaint saying that wetlands have been disturbed on our property. So the US Army Corps contacted Mr. Brock, our client, earlier today and said that a formal complaint's been issued. So usually, in the case of this, what would happen is they would require him to do a hydrologic determination. However, we have already conducted two site visits and done so, so I've been in touch with Ben McIntyre to say, hey, we will be submitting this tomorrow for an AJD to receive your approval and to show that what our findings are. So I'll be turning over all of our data to the Corps tomorrow in AJD and being compliant and cooperative with them.
Okay. Do you have an idea of the timeline of that process?
Usually, it's about a thirty-business-day turnaround. Same for TDEC, but with us already having the report done, we're just going to go ahead and turn everything in. We do have an LRN number, I do not have that, I received on the way down here, which is a facility ID number. They will then attach that to it, so it's known that this has already been entered in the system, so we don't have to go and wait in line in the process with everyone else. We can go ahead and say, hey, this has been entered into the Army Corps system, and we'll be submitting all of our data to support that.
All right. Any other questions from the commission?
The, I guess...
Hey, Marvin.
I use your microphone.
Speak into your microphone, please.
The drainage easement, what does that consist of, when we say drainage easement?
I cannot speak to drainage easement, I'm an environmental professional.
All right, I'll let you go then.
All right, let's, before we start getting any, if we have any more direct questions for him, but other than that, let's entertain a motion. All right, we got staff report first, but, all right, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Luthy, you have staff report.
Yeah. This item before you today is a request for review and approval of a preliminary plat. Preliminary plat seeks to create twenty-one new lots of record and three open space tracks, so in zoned R1, and is located in that to-be-determined Wilson Avenue. I would just like to advise the commission that right, at this time, this is just a preliminary plat. A quick, brief overview of the general approval process for major subdivisions is a submission of a preliminary plat. That preliminary plat needs to identify site features, lots, open space tracks, the street, sidewalks, utilities, that general information. It needs to designate areas for wastewater and stormwater, those detention areas that you're seeing. But again, that's just a preliminary plat. This does not create lots of record. It does not create the lots, it's just a preliminary plan. After that preliminary plan has been approved by the planning commission, construction plans are submitted to the city engineer, to our MS four stormwater engineer, and to the public works department. Those construction plans are where you're going to have the required provision of the wetland study, the notice of coverage from TDEC, all of their engineering for the storm drainage and other infrastructure, and all of that sort of information comes in the grading plan. All of that's part of the construction plans. Those construction plans are reviewed and approved by the public works department and the city engineer. Bonds are issued, disturbance permits are granted. For developments of this size, you'll also need a disturbance permit from the state of Tennessee from TDEC to be doing that work. And then, at a certain point, when the developer has done enough of that work, where they're comfortable getting a bond for the remaining public infrastructure to be installed, that's when this would come back before the planning commission again for a final plat review. Once that final plat is approved, like the one we just did for the Sagewood subdivision, that's when that actually creates those lots of record and finalizes that design. Now, some of the concern is between changes that might happen while the construction plans are being developed. If there are minor modifications, those are slight changes to, I think it's four fewer lots, no changes to public infrastructure placement or location, that can go before the development advisory committee. All committee members get to review those changes. If all committee members deem them to be minor, then those changes can be made and just reflected on the final plat. If those changes are deemed by any committee member to be a major design, or it influences more than four lots, or I have ultimate authority at the end of it to deem any change major and require it to go back to the planning commission, a new preliminary plat will have to come back before the planning commission for reapproval. So if there are any discrepancies that come up with the development of those construction plans, at any point, ultimately, myself, I can decide it has to go back to planning commission, and usually, that's if it affects more than one lot, or they're moving around infrastructure or easements, you'll have to reapprove that. And so a new preliminary plat will have to be presented, and that'll have to be approved. So this one that we have today is just a preliminary plat. Once this, if this were to get approved, it would move on to the next stage, which is the approval and the review of those construction plans. And then if there are any significant changes, it would be discussed at a DAC meeting, and then most likely brought back before the planning commission for reapproval of that preliminary plat if there were significant changes. And then from that point, it would come back to you again for review and approval of a final plat.
Clarification on that. At what point can they break ground?
The only time that site disturbance can take place is after approval of the construction plans. Once a preliminary plat is approved, it specifically says in our subdivision regulations, you cannot start grading, clearing the site, removing trees, moving dirt, or interacting with the site at all until you get an approved construction permit, a land disturbance permit, and that grading permit, which those all come from approval of the construction plans.
Thank you. All right, this is, entertain a motion for the...
Chief, may I add one more question?
No, sir, thank you. No, the public hearing is closed, I'm sorry. All right, motion on the floor.
For the sake of discussion, I'll make a motion of approval, so we can have a discussion.
Right. Motion from Ms. Seaborn, second from Ms. McGee.
So, Mr. Luthy, can you talk a little bit about, there has been some initial look at drainage plans and water retention, correct? Can you comment on what the status of that was and what the planning development committee has found?
Yeah, so with this site, because of the large amount of concern from neighboring residents about this site, we thought it might be prudent to have those construction plans be created and reviewed concurrent with the preliminary plat, just because of the large amount of observation going on with this development. So we have had those construction plans have gone through our DAC process, those have been reviewed. And I believe, you know, it, there were several rounds of comments we had, comments with the wastewater, our stormwater, because we are an MS four community, so our stormwater is quite stringent. And that's gone through reviews with Mr. Patterson, it's gone through reviews with Eric and Adam Carter, our city engineer. And at this time, I believe all of the comments on that one have been addressed. Now, we can't approve those, those plans cannot be approved yet, because there is no approved preliminary plat. They've been reviewed by our public works, city engineer, and stormwater engineering departments, and have found that those construction plans have met the comments that are provided to them. But they're not approved yet, because we don't have a preliminary plat.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Although this is just the preliminary only, just for the reassurance of the residents, can we postpone this vote until after these future site visits are made and have all of the information brought back at one time? I think that's fair.
To address your concern, we have to make a determination on this in thirty days from today. We can make a motion to require other things, what needs to happen. Actually, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Warsham and let him clarify on that, if you're okay with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, yes, I mean, we can postpone this, or we can, we can, we can... Okay, so, yes, we, I mean, we can, we can postpone this, or we can, we can, we can. Make a motion to, to do something until we, until some of this, until some of this other stuff clears. I think that's within our purview, but I, I will entertain motions, Mr. Luthy wants to speak, so I'll let him correct me.
Part of the, the, the difficulty with that is that those items that we're asking for are not required for the preliminary plat. So, we would be postponing a compliant plat for documents and information that is not required. Which I do not believe we would have solid enough reason to postpone it. Because that information is part of the construction plans, it's not part of the preliminary plat. We have a compliant preliminary plat, so I don't know if we'd be able to postpone this. Waiting on extra information that is not a requirement in our subdivision regulations or zoning ordinance.
Is the, from your discussion on this, from, from Mr. Seaborn's question, comment about that, the construction plans sound like they're almost turnkey after this.
The construction plans that we have, have checked all of the boxes, yes. However, and I believe, this was a discussion we had the last time. Our public works department and our city engineer requires a pre-construction meeting before approving construction plans. That pre-construction meeting only takes place the, the days they have set aside where the city engineer can be present, and our stormwater engineer can be present, is on Thursdays. So, even if, you know, this plat were to get approved, and the construction plans were wanting, the developer wanted to get those approved. The earliest that would be able to happen would be Thursday, because we'd have to host that, or the public works department would have to set up that pre-construction meeting. And that would be after the, the TDEC site visit.
So, just for clarity. This, this vote for tonight is only for the preliminary plan, it's not to, for the groundbreaking or any of that?
But if we approve this, they'll be able to break ground.
It doesn't come back to us.
It doesn't come back to us before that.
Not for seven months.
I would like to furthest and hear comments from St. John's.
Alright. Yeah, and just so you guys understand, as far as the review process goes, when it comes to wetlands. You know, the city doesn't have any jurisdiction on whether or not waters of the state or waters of the United States are such. So, what we do, and what our responsibility is as an MS four, is to make sure the applicant goes through their due process. So, as part of this review, the TDEC predictor that you heard discussed, it does show possible wetlands on this site. Now, that predictor is wrong quite often, it's right quite often, I've seen it go both ways, probably about fifty percent of the time. But, my comment, when I saw that to the applicant was. TDEC, based on that, is going to require that you do an HD, you know, a hydrological determination to determine whether or not these wetlands are there. When you do that, the city wants a copy of that for our files, and so we can see what's there, because if there are waters of the state or waters of the United States there. We do have other requirements that kick in, such as buffer zones that have to be provided and, and maintained. So, we have to know what's there, but it's up to those federal and state agencies to determine whether or not there is anything there, to concur with that. It's, it's the applicant's responsibility to identify anything there, and then those agencies agree or disagree. So, we, we requested a copy of the HD report and the concurrence, and, and received that. You know, so we're satisfied that they had met, you know, their requirements, you know, as part of the application process. So. From that standpoint, though, you know, from a standpoint of approving these plans. There is no intention from the public works department to approve these construction plans. Knowing that these other agencies are coming to see that they agree, and it's actually not even another agency, I mean, it's a different part of TDEC, I guess. I think it's not the Columbia Field Office that's coming this week, I think it's the Natural Resources Section out of Nashville that will be coming down. Same department, different section, I guess you would say. And, you know, if they find that there are wetlands on the property. And that the original HD and concurrence were wrong. Then, what the city will require them to do is adjust accordingly. You know, and that is really depends on the amount of wetlands that are there, they would have to delineate those wetlands. Determine the extent, determine the acreage basically. And depending on what's found there, would determine their next steps. If it's a small area of wetland that could be filled by permit, then likely that's what they would do. And this plat wouldn't probably change at all. If the wetlands are large enough that they would not be able to just fill those by permit or under a general permit. And, you know, without getting into mitigation, that type of thing, then they may determine, well, we're going to need to avoid these wetlands. At which point, the plat would have to be modified, and would have to come back before you guys to show those modifications. So, you know, it really will depend on what is found out there as to what their, you know, correct avenue would be at this point. Whether they can, you know, get another permit to fill the wetlands and leave this plat as is. Or if they would need to avoid those wetlands, you know, and modify the plat accordingly. And that's all going to be based on the size of anything that they find, if they find anything there at all.
Right now, today, TDEC says there's no wetlands.
That's correct.
I'd also like to ask a question about stormwater, so we're, that's about wetlands. I would like to hear your opinion of, of the idea here and what their plan is to solve stormwater.
So, they had, and you have two different aspects of stormwater that have to be dealt with in an MS four at this point. You have stormwater detention, which is the quantity aspect, you have water quality that has to be dealt with as well. So, these basins have been designed as a wet pond that also provides detention. The wet pond aspect of that is to meet the water quality requirements. And then you have the detention requirements above and beyond that to meet the water quantity requirements. What they have proposed for detention is to over detain. You know, the requirement is that the flow leaving the site after development cannot be any greater. The peak flows cannot be any greater than the flows that are out there today. In a pre-developed condition. So, and they are required to provide that detention for the two-year storm, the five-year storm, and the twenty-five-year storm here in Tallahassee. The hundred-year storm, they have to be able to handle safely, but not necessarily have lower peak flows than prior to development. However, their design does detain for the hundred-year storm. And it actually, their peak flows post-development, you know, with the detention as they designed it. Are approximately, they're a little over half of pre-existing flows, I would say, you know, sixty percent or so, you know. And, and for some of the smaller storms on one of the ponds, it actually is half of the pre-existing flows. And overall, you know, it's probably sixty percent.
So, you would say it improves by forty percent the flow coming off of this property?
Based on their calculations and the design that they've submitted, that's correct. And which is beyond what is required, I mean, if they are, you know, at ninety-nine percent of what would be out there today, that would be compliant. It's the question that you had about.
The drainage.
Drainage easements.
Yeah.
Drainage easements are often misunderstood, I don't even like the term because of the way they're misunderstood, they do not work like a utility easement. That is not, a drainage easement does not give the city, you know, the right to come in there and maintain that drainage. In fact, the attorneys with MTS and the state have determined and said that, you know, it's actually illegal for. The city to go in and maintain drainage on private property. So, your drainage easements really are just a point of clarification on plats. That this area is set aside for drainage, and therefore can't be built on, can't be, you know, developed in any other way. But it is not like a utility easement where it's giving some public entity permission to go in and do work, it does not do that.
So, I guess, when I look at this, I look at the elevation lines on there. There is nothing to direct the water to these open spaces, they don't even call those detention ponds, they're just leaving it undisturbed, right? The open space?
No, these will be ponds.
They will be. I don't see it on here? Okay. So, that will be a lower area for water to hopefully collect, right?
Those will be, those will all be encompassed with ponds.
But there's nothing direct, to direct that water that direction, all the water, I mean, all the elevation shows that.
No, he's saying this is existing topolite, you haven't seen the proposed yet.
The water is directed to those ponds.
They will be doing something like dig, digging out so that the water will go to those ponds, that's what I don't understand, yeah.
The water will get to the ponds from the, the street, and now there may be areas like there are for most developments, there may be small areas that don't go to the ponds. You typically don't have one hundred percent of the drainage go to the ponds, you will have areas that will continue to drain where there's.
So, this, these only are from the road out to the ponds, not from the back of the properties out to the ponds.
Yeah, you're not going to take, you know, drainage off of some of the back of these lots that's currently going off the back of these lots.
Will continue.
Likely to continue, and I don't have proposed plans in front of me either, but that would be typical for that to be the case.
Okay, so all solid surfaces would be directed to the retention ponds?
Yes. And, they, I say yes. I don't know, you know, without having those plans in front of me, there are times also when you will have areas that, you know, don't drain directly to the pond. But they still incorporated into those calculations as an area that, you know, is accounted for, you know, with the over detention. So, you know, off the end of the cul-de-sac, say, that may be draining out there and not going to the ponds. You know, without having that plan in front of me, I can't say for sure on that, but, but certainly the majority of the roadway would be going into those ponds, yes.
Alright, thank you. Any discussion, we make a motion?
I'll make the comment I've made before, we, we, unfortunately, the way our rules are written, we can't deny this because it meets our requirements. I don't like the way our requirements are written, because this is not harmonious with the neighborhood that's around us, all, all the way around this. I think that's a problem that we have here in Tallahassee, that you can do something like this, you can put a ton of homes in there with only about, what, six or seven houses around it. I don't know what we can do about that, but that is, that is not a harmonious way of development. And I don't agree with it, but, sorry, we're, we are restricted by what we can do.
I don't necessarily agree with you, but, but. The, I mean, we can do, you know, we, we can make a motion to, to postpone this and do what we want to do with that, if we want to do something like that, to wait on the, 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 the furtherment of the stuff. We can, we can look at things like that, we can vote on it today. I'm up for options, if there's no other discussion, I'll just call a vote, but. Sir, you're. This is a discussion amongst the commission at this point, there's no, there's no other public comment. Understand. Hear your comment. I, I, I do, I do live with, I, I do, I do, I live two hundred meters from there. Anyway, the public comment is over, is, and I, and, and this is the, this is the process, I'm sorry, but I, I cannot allow you, we, we, we can't address that. The. Alright, I'll call a vote, if there's no other discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone thirty days.
The, we got a motion to do what?
Postpone to the next meeting.
Postpone, motion, motion to postpone to the next meeting? And a second from Ms. McGee, alright, and we were postponing and waiting on.
So, just to clarify, how much time will we have after that postponement to?
I do believe that because this is compliant, if you postpone it, it'll hit the over thirty days and would be approved. I, this, yeah, you do not have, there is nothing, we can't just postpone projects for information that's not required. According to our subdivision regulations.
Our next meeting's over thirty days from now.
What's that?
Our next meeting's over thirty days from now.
No, we have thirty days from when the project was deemed fully submitted to approve it and review it.
Do you know what date that was?
Over thirty days ago. This project received requests from the developer to defer and to wait on that to address comments. But it has been thirty days since the project has been complete and deemed satisfactory. And all the required pieces have been submitted. It was brought before you today as a compliant per our subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance, a compliant preliminary plat.
I'm, I'm just asking, do we know, is, if we don't prove tonight, if we postpone tonight, at what date will it automatically be approved?
At this point, I would have to check, I mean, I believe the applicant would have to take it before a judge to get that approved, but that would be tomorrow.
Okay.
Because we don't have subsequent ground, or substantial grounds for postponing, because full compliance has been displayed. With the preliminary plat.
I'm, I'm often wrong, but I was under the impression that we had thirty days from when it presented from this board. Initially. Is that, is that true?
We are required to review and either approve or deny within thirty days of submission, not from review.
Okay.
That's not what I thought, I thought it was the other way around to you.
Can we verify that, Mr. Worsham? Mr. Worsham, do you have an opinion differing?
No, I, I agree with Mr. Luthy.
Well, that means if it didn't even show up, it would be approved whether it got here or not, right? I mean, it's, doesn't seem like we have a option to postpone.
So, if an item is submitted, it has to be reviewed, if it is deemed non-compliant, it does not get placed on the agenda, and that clock is not able to be utilized. Once an application is submitted and deemed fully complete, it is put on to review. If that review finds that application fully compliant, it is then put on the agenda for your consideration, and then you do have to consider it in that thirty-day window. However, if an application, there is, there is no realm where an application is submitted complete and deemed compliant or not compliant, that's not put on your agenda. Because if it's deemed non-compliant, it is, receives a letter of non-compliance and is precluded from that thirty-day timer. If it is deemed complete and is compliant, is required by law, I have to put it on the agenda, and you have to review it. The applicant can also request, even if the project is non-compliant, they can request to be placed on the agenda, at which point you'd be able to deny it. But there is no sort of environment where an application can be submitted that's complete, that could just not get on your agenda and utilize that. Timeline for review and approval to, to abuse that essentially. Anything that is deemed complete, you know, if it's non-compliant, I give the applicant the choice to request to remove it from the agenda. If they don't, it goes before you for denial, and if it's compliant, it goes before you for approval.
Right, you have a motion on the floor to postpone.
I'll recede my motion.
Okay, okay. We can vote on it, alright. With that, I'll call the vote on this, all in favor of the Sweetwater Major Subdivision Preliminary Plat. As written, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
That's five to one, abstain? Five to one, motion fails, five to one.
We have to give a reason, don't we?
Alright. Can do another motion, we, we have to formally deny this or yes.
So the, the act of voting no on the approval does substantiate a denial. Uh, you don't have to take an extra motion. However, it is a state requirement that if you are going to deny something, you have to cite specifically an area of non-compliance within the zoning ordinance or the subdivision regulations to make that denial, uh, substantial in effect.
I would, I would write it, even though we have TDEC approval, I would write it that our denial is based on that there is more outstanding information that TDEC may not have, that we may not have, and that we wait until we get that information.
So I, I think our, in my opinion, and this is, is that the, the denial is based on the fact that we have, there's been a formal complaint and we are, we're denying that based on that we have not had time to evaluate that past that formal complaint.
I, however, I will need a cited area of non-compliance, then, either within the subdivision regulations or the zoning ordinance.
I'm not a, I'm not a hydrolog. I'm not a hydro, I, I don't, I don't, the, the, the denial is based on the, the determination of the wetlands on the, in the subdivision thing. I don't know what section that is, but that's, we can, if you want to give me a day, I can get the answer, but. I don't have it in front of me.
Looking for clarification on TDEC's approval. Uh, and.
Is that enough? Sorry. Alright, we're, I, I think, I think Mr. Rice had it.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're looking for, uh, waiting for, uh, a confirmation of TDEC's approval.
A motion to deny pending TDEC approval?
Sure. Well, TDEC's already approved it. Pending inv- further investigation based on TDEC approval.
Yes, looking for further investigation.
Got it.
I just, I just made my vote based on Mr. Luthy's comment that they are compliant, and so now we're trying to say that they're not compliant.
I don't think we're saying that they're not compliant. I think it's important that we get the information.
I, I agree, and we're gonna get it, and we're gonna get it, and if it's, and if it comes back bad, that's gonna make them change their plans. I just, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, Mr. Luthy's told us it's compliant. He's asking us to say where it's not compliant with this approval process, not with everything through the entire process. Am I, am I correct in that?
At this point, the vote's been, been taken. We can't necessarily rescind it at this point in this meeting. Correct?
Uh, I believe the original commissioner who made the original motion could make a motion to reevaluate the original motion. So I believe it was you, Commissioner Rice, who made, who made the original?
I think I made the amendment.
I made it.
Whoever made the original motion could make a motion to reconsider.
Yep, so I'll make a motion to reconsider if that's what everybody wants to do. I've got no issue with that.
Do we have a second?
Alright, reconsider. Are we voting again?
So let's don't just vote, because.
Do we want to allow anybody else to come up and talk before we take another vote and just go through the same thing again?
It sounds like we have no option.
So I'd like to clarify some things you guys have mentioned.
Which is a shame, like Mr. Self pointed out.
Do we want to allow anybody to come up here and discuss it?
Do we have that power?
I would say that we would. We would allow someone to clarify.
I don't think we do, but, but I will, I will, I will obtain legal advice.
Mr. Worsham, do we have the power to allow people to come up here and?
You, you can certainly amend your rules right here if you want to vote to do that, because, because obviously you do. I think Mr. Luthy wants to clarify one thing for you.
Correct.
Perhaps didn't get clarified appropriately about approval at this time, because it does meet our second subdivision regulations.
Yeah, I, it, even if, when this, if this gets approved, um, and TDEC does their site visit. If TDEC modifies that permit at all, part of the land disturbance permit is supplying that TDEC permit. So, um, you know, regardless of, of what happens, if TDEC goes out and finds wetlands, they can rescind their notice of coverage. At which point, you can't pull construction permits, you can't pull disturbance permits. You know, there, I, I don't want the commission to think that approving this is allowing all this to be bypassed. Any, anything that comes out of the state, you know, is, it, we require that state permits for that construction permit. So as soon as, if that state permit were to go away, they, you couldn't pull construction permits, couldn't get a disturbance permit, grading permit. Can't we do any work on the site? Um, and again, this is just for the preliminary plat. This has, this does not permit grading. Does not permit site work, does not permit the removal of a tree, absolutely nothing. All of that is part of the construction plans. And, and if there are new developments with the, uh, hydrology studies and reports on this site, and those are to change, um, TDEC would require different information be provided. Uh, they'll require different site features to be accommodated for, and this will have to come back before you. Um, so really, the, the two outcomes from this meeting are, the site is determined that the current hydrology report is correct, at which point it can proceed as drawn and as you have approved. Or the study goes out and determines that the hydrology report was not correct and that the notice of, of, uh, coverage was given in, in error. At which point, the site would have to be modified and it would have to come back before you for reapproval. Um, so there is no possible way at this time for the commission to put, uh, anyone in a position where, uh, the reviews from the state could be bypassed or where construction permits would be granted in error. Um, really, all that would happen is either the project proceeds as planned because the reports are satisfactory or the project requires revision because the, the reports were deemed unsatisfactory.
I agree with you. I just think that the, the, we are here to, to understand that, to understand that compliance and that, and I feel like there is enough question on the floor to, to want to wait until that final determination is actually made before we proceed. And that, that's my position. I mean, I, I definitely, I don't think we're trying to bypass anything. I don't think anything in the such. I just, it's.
I would like to ask the question, is it possible on the parts of the property with the stormwater that are not going to the retention pond to create more disturbance than there is currently?
More disturbance? I, I'm not sure I understand.
More water flow, more issues than they're having now with the water flow that's not going to the detention pond.
Your flows are required to continue going the same directions that they're going now. So those areas that are flowing to the north will be going through the retention areas other than possibly off of the back of a lot, which would not be changed from what's there now. So. You know, the overall, I guess for a, for a very small area, there, it is possible, yes, that you could have an area, say, off of the cul-de-sac, that would create more flow to a given drain than what's going there now. That would be accounted for in the overall calculations for the site. The design engineer could probably speak to whether or not that is the case on this one. I don't have those grading plans in front of me, or I could.
Do we have the design engineer here for that?
No, we turned all our stuff to the city and they approved it, so I didn't think we needed to be here.
So the plans aren't already approved?
No, they're not. Um. There are no staff.
You, you, you can address the commission.
So, um, and as, as I said earlier, you know, the intent of the Public Works Department is not to approve those plans with additional information coming. You know, there's nothing, as Samuel said, there's no approval you could give tonight that would keep them from having to adequately deal with any wetlands that are found on that property, if there are any wetlands found on that property. If there are none found on that property, then they would be able to continue with this plat and with the construction plans that they have. But TDEC is not, if TDEC or the Corps of Engineers, you know, was to go out there and say, yes, there are wetlands here. It was missed on the initial report and it was missed by whoever came down from TDEC and provided the concurrence. Their outcome is not going to be, well, we missed it, you're okay, you can continue on and do whatever you want with those wetlands, it's on us. They are still going to require the developer to deal with those wetlands appropriately if they're there.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
Alright. You gonna do a motion to reconsider?
Where's our, what's our motion? We have a motion to reconsider.
He already had a.
Alright, I made a motion. I'm hoping by second in here.
Yeah, I was, it was Ms. McGee. Alright, so.
So what do we have to vote on that motion?
We need to vote on the motion to reconsider.
Okay.
So, vote on the motion to reconsider. All in favor, reconsider.
So just think about what that means, so everybody understands. If you vote yes, it means we're gonna vote on it again. If it's, if we vote no, it'll be to maintain the five one voter that we just had. Just so everybody understands.
Okay, say that one more time.
If you vote yes on the motion to reconsider, it'll be like we never took that first vote and we'll start again.
That's correct.
If we vote no, the vote we just took will stand.
All in favor of reconsider?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to reconsider passes six to zero. Alright, new motion.
Motion to approve pending staff comments and approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Rice, second from Ms. Seaborn. I'll let you get caught up, cause, okay. Cause I'm behind. I can't write that fast. Okay, um, any more discussion on this at all? If you, if, if, if voting no, I think we need to come up with a reason in the subdivision restrictions. I mean, I'm, I don't know. Anyway. All in favor?
Hold on, Mr. Luthy, I think I have to call it and I want to hear what you guys say.
Yeah, you know, one thing that might help on this one is you. I believe you'd be able to put a condition, um, on this one, that a, a condition on the approval that, uh, requires any modifications to the site to be deemed major. Um, I know in our subdivision regulations that there are minor and major modifications, and generally those are to the purview of the development, eh, Development Advisory Committee, and then I have ultimate authority to determine whether or not they're major or minor. If they're minor, the DAC can approve those, uh, revisions. If they're major, you have to approve them. If it would help, you could put a condition that any and all modifications on this plat are deemed major. If anything has to change, it'll have to come back before you. Um, that way you don't have to worry about, you know, whether or not, we are determining whether or not they're major or minor. You could just require that all of them are major. So if there are any modifications, it'll have to come back before this board.
I, I concur with that. I believe that's correct.
My, I, okay. If we wanted.
Make a friendly amendment to your own motion if you want.
I'll make amendment to amend my motion to allow that, um, any modification to the plat will be considered a major modification, therefore should come back before the board.
I concur with the second.
Good. Alright, any discussion on the motion?
Thank you.
Alright, vote on the motion. The motion is written.
Amendment.
The motion, the motion to amend, the amendment, the motion as written.
I was, I was considering it as a friendly amendment, but that's, we can vote on it.
Yeah, well, let's vote, just vote on it. Alright, all in favor of that amendment is written. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any more discussion on the additional thing? Call a vote. Alright, all in favor of the approval of the Sweetwater Major Subdivision Preliminary Plat, subject to the amendment of that all, 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 all modifications on this will be, will be deemed major and they will come back to the planning commission? Aye?
Aye.
Nay? Um, and, uh, and abstained? Alright, motion passes, five to one.
That whole process wasn't just.
Me. Motion, motion passes five to one. Um, with that, we will close this, this hearing or this, this, uh, the, we're, the end of our subdivision plats? So we'll move on. Alright. Alright, B, moving on. I'll give it a second. We can, we can address that. Alright. Alright, moving on. B, site plans. Uh, five oh one South Jackson Street, site plan. Request for the planning commission to approve the site plan. Uh, purpose of this site plan is to create new multi-tenant commercial buildings and accompanying parking for said tenants. Applicant is Mr. Joe Denby. I'd like to invite the applicant to come in at this time or, again, Mr.?
Sorry, this is South Jackson.
Alright. Are we?
Yes.
Are we good? Sir, sir, sir. It's not the time. Sir. Alright, this is five oh one South Jackson Street.
Okay, thank you.
You're recognized.
My name's Kenny Sadler. I'm the design engineer for this. Address four eight six six Woodbury Highway, Manchester. I'm representing Mr. Denby, uh, tonight for this development. Uh, Mr. Denby is present if anyone has a question for him. Uh, the development would be for a three thousand square foot retail building. It's right there beside seven eleven, uh, the new seven eleven that just went in there at the intersection. Uh, this property is, uh, West Volney Street and South Jackson Street, and it has a, uh, small accessory building behind this, uh, building also.
Alright, thank you. Alright, these are also public hearings, I believe. Um, yes, they're public hearings. Um, so anyone in the public who wants to speak on the site plan at this time, welcome to come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Luthy, staff report.
Yeah, uh, you might recognize this property. This one was, uh, came before you, was owned by Mr. Samuel Kehoe. And this one got rezoned from C two to C one. Um, and now Mr. Denby has purchased the property and would like to, uh, build the proposed commercial structure on it. Uh, this property's been vacant for quite some time. Uh, when the original seven eleven was built, uh, they got offered this property. They were gonna purchase it, then they decided not to purchase it, so it sat vacant. Uh, because of its C two zonings, the setbacks are quite oppressive with a front setback of thirty-five feet and a side setback of thirty-five feet because of it being a corner lot. Uh, so it never got developed. Uh, but it has since been rezoned to C one, uh, with the setbacks in C one are a lot more favorable, uh, for it being able to be developed. And so there is a, uh, commercial project that is being shown before you today. Um, in our review of this, a couple of the comments that came up, uh, there is a sidewalk that is shown on South Jackson. Um, we requested and it was complied with to have that sidewalk continue along West Volney Street. Uh, so if that sidewalk continues along Volney, uh, back to Atlantic, uh, we'll have a stub to connect to, uh, when that, that property behind this, whenever develops, I'll be able to get that sidewalk so you can get access from Atlantic to South Jackson. Um, there is a small storage building in the back, uh, that's accessory storage for the proposed retail building. And then, uh, we discussed with the applicant, uh, they didn't think they would need a full dumpster, uh, so this site is gonna have a roll cart. Uh, and there's a pad set aside for that, that our Public Works Department got to look at, and they're okay with that. Um, and then outside of that, um, everything else is as expected and complies with those zoning ordinance and.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Luthy. I'm trying to find my place here, so. That's nine eight five, okay. Here we go. Perfect. Alright. Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion from the commission.
I'm sorry.
For approval.
Motion for approval, Mr. Mayor Seaborn, second from Mr. Rice. Any discussion on the site plan? Thanks for the comment about the sidewalks. I like that. I was, that's one of the things I look for.
Um, what is in the back of the property? It looks, it kinda looked like a, some, a pond to me, but then it says grass. I'm un, I'm kinda unsure. I guess that's a, the, the trash bin back there where the concrete is, maybe?
That area that you see outlined there. That area that you see outlined there is a detention basin.
Okay.
Uh, that, it's, uh, meets the pre versus post comments that, uh, Mr. Patterson was talking about before. Uh, so, and it actually reduces the rate of runoff, uh, by about half as well, but it is, all that area there outlined is a detention basin.
Okay.
That you see there for the two year through the hundred year storm event.
And that backs right up against that exit road on the backside of the seven eleven there?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments? With that, I'll call the vote, uh, all in favor of the site plan, uh, as, as written, subject to staff comments, if there was any. Looks like they're minor, okay. Alright, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, okay, that motion passes six to zero. Rezone requests, uh, section C, uh, Samuel Ornate rezone request, a request for the, uh, request for the planning commission to provide comment to the, to the board of mayor and aldermen, reg- regarding rezoning of six oh three South Franklin Street, applicant is Mr. Samuel Ornate. Would you like to invite the applicant or representative at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to the public hearings, these are public hearings, so I'd like to invite anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this rezone request to come forward at this time. And I'll close the public hearing, so we'll move to staff report, Mr. Luthy.
Yeah, uh, this rezon for Mr. Ornate is at six zero three South Franklin Street, uh, there's some, a building that's on that site that has been, is in the process of being renovated and turned into apartments, I think one or two of the units are occupied, a couple of the other units are under construction. Um, when this one originally came through, um, I think he spoke to, I don't know if he, who he spoke to, but he got, um, thought he was going to be able to turn this into apartments, but it was zoned C two, um, so in order for him to be able to keep these as apartments, it'd have to be rezoned, uh, and the appropriate zone in this area is C three for that one, um, so you're seeing this before you today to get that property rezoned to C three, so that we can get this, uh, existing structure into compliance.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Luthy. Motion from the commission?
Motion to send a favorable recommendation.
Alright, second, Sellers and McGee. Alright, any discussion on this? Then I'll call the vote, uh, all in favor of, to send a favorable recommendation to the board of mayor and aldermen, uh, regarding this rezone request, uh, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, motion passes six to zero. Uh, Sandra Farah rezone request, uh, request for the planning commission to provide comment to the board and mayor and aldermen regarding the rezoning of one oh seven South Polk Street, the applicant is Mr. Marco Cruz, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward at this time if he's available. Sir, you're recognized, thank you, thanks for your patience.
Uh, yes, my name is Marco Cruz of Rico Hall Solutions LLC, uh, the plan is to, uh, rezone, uh, subdivide and build a, uh, couple of office spaces or single family homes.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, this is a public hearing, so anyone from the public will speak at this time, come forward. Alright, close the public hearing, Mr. Luthy.
Yep, um, like the applicant, applicant said, the applicant's looking to have this property rezoned from C two to C three to just, uh, be able to utilize the flexibility that our C three zone offers, um, at this time, the applicant is not sure if he wants to do a commercial space or a single family home, uh, rezoning the property to C three allows you to choose one or the other, that makes it more flexible, um, and, and leaves more potential, uh, development avenues to the developer, uh, and C three is compliant with the surrounding areas, um, so that's why it's before you today.
Alright, thank you, commission, motion for the commission?
I'm just trying to visualize where this is.
It's on South Polk Street, I looked all this up earlier, but I can't remember.
Part I can't even remember where.
Past Damons, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's over there by East Lincoln.
Yeah, yeah.
Elementary, yeah. Alright, motion from the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, or did somebody already do that?
No, it's, it's you.
Okay.
Send a favorable recommendation.
Send a favorable recommendation, I'm sorry, you're gonna, y'all are gonna train me eventually.
I second.
Alright, I got a second from Ms. McGee, so we're good.
I think that's where.
I got, I got, I got a motion from, from Mayor Seaborn and a second from, from Alderman McGee.
Alright, any discussion on this one, that is over there by East Lincoln, like, yeah, okay, it took me a second to, I couldn't figure out.
I knew it was on that side somewhere, but I just had trouble visualizing it.
It's on, yeah, Dairy Queen, but it's a couple blocks up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, no, this is, this is not by Dairy Queen, this is, or this is, this is closer to Dairy Queen than these, there's another one from East Lincoln, nevermind, sorry. Alright, let's get to business, um, any other discussion on this? C two to C three, uh, alright, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, alright, motion to send a favorable recommendation to the mayor, board of mayor and aldermen, passes, uh, six to zero. Out of number three, Joe Denby rezone request, a request for the planning commission to provide comment to the board of mayor and aldermen regarding the rezoning of four thirty, five hundred, and two lots to be determined, uh, Oakwood Road, the applicant is Joe Denby, uh.
Andy Best, representative for Joe Denby, uh, he asked me to come up here and, uh, just basically ask, we're gonna request four, four parcels, existing parcels that, that I did a survey for him on to, uh, to rezon, I believe, from, uh, R two to R three, is that, is that correct? Yes.
Alright, thank you.
What are the two, to be determined lots, are they the two empty lots behind the other ones?
So, Marvin, they'll be.
Subdivided later.
They'll be subdivided, they'll be subdivided later.
They've been subdivided? No, they haven't been, so they don't have. They will be later.
They, they, re, re, rezone and then they will be, then it'll be subdivided later.
Which, trying to figure out which lots.
Alright.
I've got a picture, but it doesn't spell out which lot. That's one, and that's one, and I think these two are maybe.
So on this photo, which one is it, yeah?
It's that large grass area.
There's several sections here and it's hard to.
That's what I was gonna ask the question for.
No.
Right.
Yeah. Hold on, we're trying to figure out which one it is.
Hang on, we need to, this is a public hearing. So, let's, anyone wanna come speak for this? Sorry, I shouldn't point, um, alright, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, um, and move to, uh, sta, um, Mr. Luthy for the staff report, he can maybe clear up our questions before we have to ask them.
Right, so if you look at the, uh, map that you have there, uh, four thirty is at the corner of Oakwood and Glasgow Street. Four thirty is the blue-ish, the kinda light gray roofed house with the three accessory structures on it. Five hundred is that property that has the gravel drive going into it, and then the other two properties are the large grass area behind five hundred, and then the other lot is the other vacant lot behind four thirty, those are the four lots, uh, that we're considering for rezon today.
I still can't figure this out, okay. I named this one, oh, and this, okay, that makes sense there, yeah.
The one with the gravel drive, is that, what kind of structure is that on there?
So that gravel drive there, I believe there was an existing trailer there that has since been removed, um, and that gravel drive is being replaced. Uh, I believe it was already slated or dedicated but not built yet, there is a chastained street, uh, that goes down, uh, between lots four thirty and five hundred, and then terminates in a cul-de-sac on those two to be determined lots, um, so that gravel drive will not be utilized, there'll be an actual road, uh, put in there.
So it's, it's the, it's the, it's the one with the gravel driveway, the one to the left of that?
Correct.
The one underneath that one, and the one to the south, I guess that's south, the one south of the gravel driveway, the one to the, to the west of gravel driveway, and the one to the, immediately to the, to the, to the southwest of the gravel driveway, okay, alright, I got it, everyone else?
I think so.
So, the, the roadway's already been approved and everything?
Uh, the roadway, like, the actual pl, engineering plans for it, I'm not sure, um, I remember that one, there was some discussion on, on that one already having been started but never finished, um, I'm not sure that, I'd have to ask, defer to the public works department on that one, but, uh, we do have some plans drawn up that I've seen, um, go around, but they get, we don't have a subdivision plan for this yet, um, we don't, you'll obviously get to review that with a preliminary plat, construction plans, a final plat, uh, this is just the rezon, uh, and this rezon is necessitated because, you know, when looking at R two to R three, the most tangible difference, um, and Commissioner Sellers actually called me to ask me about this today, so I figured I'd make a point to explain it to all of you as well, um, R two permits single family and duplex, single family's at ten thousand square feet a unit, but the duplex is at twenty thousand square feet a unit, um, which really makes it not worth ever doing the duplex because you could put two single family houses or one duplex on a double sized lot. R three allows you to do the duplex, but it's at seven thousand five hundred square feet per dwelling unit, so it lets you get a duplex in on a slightly smaller lot, um, so it makes it more viable to build a duplex, um, but the important information is the lot widths and the, um, setbacks are the same. Uh, the R two setbacks are twenty-five feet on the front and rears, ten feet on the side, and the R three setbacks are twenty-five feet on the front and rears, and ten feet on the side. So, all we're really changing with the rezon is allowing that duplex to, to be more feasible to be built on the lots there.
Allows you to put a smaller duplex?
It allows you to make it slightly smaller, to fit the duplex on a slightly smaller lot.
How many, how many houses are we talking about putting on this, these, these four properties, one of them's already got a house, right? So you have three other properties, are we talking about putting six houses back in there, or sixty plus?
We're not, we're not talking about putting any, we're talking about rezoning it.
Yeah, we have not.
I mean, that, yeah, if you rezon it, then they could do that, and that's making it a lot more dense than the surrounding areas again, like, we've talked about.
So the gravel road will become the chastained street?
Correct. I don't believe it'll, it won't curve, it'll come straight down, um, and terminate in a cul-de-sac.
Do we have a motion?
No, he was just still giving staff comments.
Let's, let's, let's get let's do a motion, so we can actually discuss this. Yeah.
I would just like to say, um, we've, I've looked at the surrounding lots, part of what I do when I bring this to you is I do check the surrounding area for average lot sizes, um, if a rezoning ever does come before you where it is irregular, um, that'll certainly be a, one of the planning considerations, the lots around there, especially if you look just north on Oakwood, those are about point one six acre lots. Um, so they're like six to seven thousand square feet lots, and the lots we're proposing would be seventy-five hundred square feet for a single family, which is almost identical to the lots on Oakwood, or if it's a duplex, it would be, uh, fi- fifteen thousand square feet, uh, which would be about the size of some of the larger lots, if you look on Oakwood, um, near the Walker Street intersection, four zero eight, there's some houses on the larger one. Uh, so the duplex would be about the same size as the duplex lots, and then the single families would be, I believe, slightly larger, uh, than the single family lots that are currently there on Oakwood Road.
Okay, you done with your staff report?
What's that?
Is that, you're, you're, is, you're done with your staff report?
Correct.
Okay, alright, I'll entertain a motion from the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved, Mr. Seaborn, second from Ms. McGee, um, Mr. Sadler, if you wanna like to, if you'd like to come up and address your whatever.
Okay, there, there was just a couple of questions, I'm not here for the rezoning, uh, but I did do the design for Oakwood, the extension, and Mr. Rice and Mr. Klein were asking about Oakwood, so there was an approval through public works to build that road, it was basically an unfinished road, it was just a gravel driveway. So there was an approval, and Mr. Denby is in the process now of upgrading that road to serve the four lots that are currently there. So that has been done and has been approved, it has nothing really to do with the rezoning, but there were a couple of questions I was just trying to clarify.
Okay.
That was approved through public works and that work is underway now.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any other discussion?
So duplexes or single family houses still could be built on these lots if they remain, aren't it?
Yes, sir. Yes.
They just wouldn't be able to be small?
The duplex lot in R two is twenty thousand square feet, the duplex lot in R three is fifteen thousand square feet, so it's twenty-five percent smaller. And there's the same lot width of one hundred and twenty-five feet, so, you know, it can just be slightly shallower in R three.
It would help. I, I mean, it'd be nice, but I, I don't necessarily see that it's something that really needs and has to be done, you could build something there to meet the requirements current, they, they could still put their cul-de-sac there and build something, correct? Lot sizes is conducive to be able to build something of that size.
Let's tell Lakewood of all this.
He explained it.
Yeah, I know, I missed it, I'm sorry.
I'm, no, I was just, I wouldn't be smarter.
No, no, that's okay. You probably shouldn't be to me, I just.
Alright. You combine all the lots, it's about two and a half acres.
Okay.
What's the, uh, is there, is there a maximum, maximum development number for two and a half acres for R three, is it?
We, we don't have maximum development numbers in our current ordinance.
I, I understand that, but there's a, there's a, there's a theoretical maximum that we can, uh, I don't know, if you, if you don't have it, I'm not too concerned, I just kind of like, you know, to, and to address Mr. Sellers' question from earlier, it's like, how much can we actually put here?
I think the important thing to consider is that in R two and R three, your minimum lot width is both for the duplexes, one hundred and twenty-five feet, and with the roadway already being approved, you can only fit so many lots along that roadway, um, so changing from R two to R three would allow you to make the lot shallower, but it would keep them at the same width, um, so it really wouldn't, you know, it's not gonna, a lot maybe could get an extra lot with a hand handle, but that's about it.
This is really just helping with, with setbacks and whatnot, though.
The setbacks are the same in R two and R three.
Just the size of the unit.
Okay.
It, it just takes five thousand square feet off the minimum lot area, that's, that's really the only tangible difference between R two and R three with respect to duplexes.
Okay. I'm sure that there's good reason, I don't know, alright, all in favor, the rezon request, Joe Denby rezon request? Oh yeah, I'm sorry, do, do you have another comment, Ms. McGee?
No, no, no.
Alright. All in favor of the motion to send a favorable recommendation to the board of mayor and aldermen for the, for the Joe Denby rezon request, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Nay, okay. That motion passes five to one with Mr. Rice opposing. Alright. Out of number four. Garabati? Um, rezon request, a request for the planning commission to provide a comment to the board of mayor and aldermen regarding the rezoning request for eight oh eight East Lincoln Street, the applicant is Mr. Cassandra Garabati. If you'd like to pronounce your name correctly for me, that'd be one of them.
That is, you got it right.
Okay, good.
This Garabati, Cassandra Garabati, I have a property at eight oh eight East Lincoln Street, when I purchased it, it was C three. I put a daycare in it, and I've closed my daycare, so I'd like it to go back to C three, so I can, it can be a residential use again.
It's, okay, it, it's C, C two currently?
Yes, we're going to C three.
Going to C three, okay.
Right?
That's what's on, that's what's on the application.
Alright, thank you, if we have any more questions, we'll, we'll, we'll get you, alright, this is a public hearing, so anyone wanna like to speak on this at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Luthy?
Like the applicant said, this property's zoned C two currently, which allowed it to be used as a daycare, a daycare's since been retired and has been returned to a residence, as the applicant is seeking a rezon to C three, so this could be used as residence.
Is C three, is, is that the C three is the, is the, is the mixed use or whatever, okay, alright, um, I was thinking R three for some, okay, I got you, thank you, alright, alright, um, alright, motion for the commission?
Motion to send a favorable, favorable recommendation to the board.
Alright, motion for Mr. Sellers. Second, second. Second, second from Miss McGee. All right, any discussion on this? All in favor of sending, to save, send a favorable recommendation to Board of Mayor, Mayor, the Board of Mayor and Alderman for rezoning from C two to C three?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Motion passes six to zero, send a favorable recommendation. With that, we are at the end of our agenda for the Planning Commission, so we are adjourned from there. And I will call to order the Board of Zoning and Appeals meeting. The first item on the agenda is to read and approve the minutes from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, Boza meetings. I will entertain a motion, the minutes as written, motion to approve from Sellers, second from Mr. Rice. All in favor of the minutes as written, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, approval of the agenda. Do I have a, a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Rice. Sorry, it sounded like auctioneer.
Second.
Second for Mr. Sellers. All in favor of the agenda as written, aye?
Aye.
There is no old business, there is no new business, therefore we are adjourned. Thank you. Glenn, I've got ten minutes.